I hope all of you can come to the board for Monday, March 16th, 2020. Six days to be in control of all matters.
These are all members of the council present. I'd like to welcome Mr. Rosen back to the council. Others including Mr. Johnson, Senator Trezor, and Laura Dolan, our city manager. Before I get to the agenda, I have a statement regarding COVID-19 that I would like to read. As we all know, Friday, March 13th, Governor Scott declared a state of emergency until April 15th. Some of the public impacts into the neighborhood areas that I have written, 15 people or 50%, but within the last two hours, the president said gatherings of 10 people only were allowed. He put that out in the last two hours, whichever is less. This year, access to facilities, certain the elderly, including hospitals and other healthcare facilities is restricted. For complete details, I do urge everyone to visit the Department of Health website or the Centers for Disease Control. Currently, there's been no major impact on the daily operations of the city airport. However, that could change on the guidance received from the state. Our dedicated employees are coming to work every day, ready to do their job. The city is currently following all guidelines set forth by the state of New York and the CDC. The city manager and department heads are receiving continuous updates regarding COVID-19, and they have reviewed our emergency operations plan, and the city is prepared to run by the state of New York. At this time, we do ask the public, if you're able to conduct your business electronically or via telephone, please do so. I'm ensuring that the city is taking COVID-19 seriously, and we continue to ensure that our facilities are kept clean and disinfected. We now, as you can see, have renewed access for people who would like to participate in our city council meetings, and I believe we have two people connected right now. And this will allow anyone to take part via telephone. This combines with the open meeting law, and I urge anyone who has questions regarding that, please visit the Secretary of State's website. In the future, if by chance we have to conduct our meetings randomly, there are complete procedures under the state statute and under the open meeting law that have been very compounded. And so, I don't have them all in front of me, but I've been reviewing them. Once again, I'd like to urge everyone to follow the steps that we set forward. Frankly, washing your hands, soaking water for 20 seconds. If not available, use alcohol sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people who are sick, staying home when you are sick. Covering your cough or sneeze with tissue if not available, coughing into your elbow. Cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched objects and surfaces. Show us your distancing, which means keeping six feet between human others. Let's kind of round this up a little bit the way we did this evening. And so, I just wanted to pass that along. And finally, I would like to urge everyone to stay calm, work together, and keep an eye on our most vulnerable population as we get through this health crisis. Thank you. With that, I'll move to item two on the agenda, which is to approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2020. Now entertain the motion. Motion made by Ms. Pedersen. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Ross. I want to have discussion from the council first, and then discussion from council members. Okay. Go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Sure. I'm Ann Shurel, and I'm the President of Newport. And I would like the minutes to change to take out the word complaint. When citizens come up and talk about things, for instance, I talked about the water budget last time. You're an acolyte fellow, and I asked some questions, and I gave you some information, which is that you sit as a water chief, so to speak, and I asked you to review it. That is not a complaint. There were questions, there were information, was information given? And I expected some information to add, which I am not at next. I did not use the word that I complained. Those asked questions, asked for information, and gave you information. Please amend the minutes to reflect that.
Thank you. Counsel, do you wish to amend the minutes?
I'd like to, Mr. Rosen, you remember to, instead of complaining, comment about the fewer water.
Commenting, okay. Is there a second? Okay. Discussion on that? Then, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it on that. Okay. And then, on the original motion, all those in favor, say aye. On the original motion to approve the minutes, we had to approve the amendment first. So, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Rosen's abstaining. Now, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the annual meeting of March 3rd, 2020. Now entertain the motion. Motion made by Mr. Ross. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on. The next item number three is readout the rules of procedure. The city council received copies of the current rules of procedure. What is your...
I think we should approve the rules of procedure.
Motion made by Mr. Ross. Is there a second? Seconded. Then, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is comments by members of the public. Before I get into the members, comments by members of the public, if people wish to comment on council agenda item number six, government appointments, when the council reaches that part of the agenda, the public will be allowed to make comments. But that is where the public comment will be made, not under the general public comments. And so, I just wanted to clarify that aspect. And with that, the first person is going to... You had City Manager Verdi, related to her, the item six on the agenda?
Not much. More not, I guess.
Okay. If I think it isn't that, I'll cut you off.
That's fine. I accept.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Christine Russell. And so, I guess I don't really want to speak so much about the vote, but I do want to say something about Laura Dolan and my personal opinion of what I've witnessed as a citizen of Newport City.
It's an act of woe.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an act of woe. Next, we have Karen from Karen Sitch in Judy Stiches. Are you speaking together or as one?
I'm Judy Stich, and I am the Newport Farmers Market Manager, and I'm a complete volunteer. And this old procedure is new to me, and I don't want to get in trouble either. The Newport City Farmers Market has been in Newport for 50 years, approximately, and it is probably the oldest running market in the state of Vermont, which I think the cities should be very proud of. We like where we are situated. We like the two days that we are on. And my main concern about the town of Cleveland and its future is that we might have to pay over $6,000 bill to be at that site this year, and this really concerns the benefits in the market because we don't know how we can come up with $6,000. I was also asked to attend this meeting by someone, which is why I'm here, and if anyone has questions about the market, I'll answer them.
Thank you. What we'll do is, we've heard your concern, and it'll be researched, and we'll have it at the next council meeting, we'll have a discussion on it. That's how, from the comment, we usually go back and forth and ask questions or answer questions, or we want to do some research as far as your concern. And so, it'll be at the next city, give us time, at the next city council meeting, we'll have, if you want to attend that meeting, we'll probably have a discussion.
Well, I'll depend on the vibe.
Oh, yes, yes, because that next meeting, who knows, it might be done remotely, and we might postpone it if we haven't decided, because everything's changing so quickly.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. The national response, evidence, and I see what you're putting down, you've got to hold off, okay? And we have Ann Shurel, and I'm not quite sure what your topic is.
No, I just figured it might harm for somebody else, and they needed it, the acolyte needed it, so I run for it.
I need it, Ann.
No, you really need to sign up for...
I'm sorry, I forgot.
The people who want to speak, the way it is done is you sign up, you don't reserve spots for other people. This is the procedure, and I don't see anything wrong with having people sign up and put the topic they wish to discuss, and so, we don't reserve for other people.
We have to be equal.
Moving on, the next item is the election of the city council president. At this time, I would entertain the motion. Is there a second? The other nominations are discussion. Then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on. City government appointments. I'll check something here. The first appointment is for city manager. And we need a motion, I'm requesting a motion to go in executive session for an initial discussion regarding the city manager's reappointment. Motion's made. Is there a second? Seconded. Discussion? Then, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we're still on item 6A, city manager's reappointment. At this time, I would entertaining a motion.
I would like to make a motion for Mayor, City Manager Laura Dolan.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Discussion from members of the council. Any discussion from members of the audience? If they're going to come up, please state your name, and we have one minute.
I'm Ann Shurel. I think you potentially subverted our chances in publicly letting this community know, publicly letting this community know what some of the complaints were about Laura Dolan. I need to start from the top of my head, I was prepared to do this, this should be done in public, not privately. So, it was this recent attempt to charge the farmer market $6,000, a 50-year-old institution, and they can't really afford to exist if you want to charge them $6,000. There was the incident with the gardens that we had, that provided free food for so many people in this community, and the way Jen was treated, and now that, we reduced inside, and the results were from all of the land.
The time is up.
I'm sure someone else will hopefully come up and just continue to listen.
Please state your name for the record.
Christine.
Okay.
That's her, that's on. Don't put that in my face. You have to say it has to be your... No, thank you. I was caught saying that earlier, and I don't know what I'm doing. Okay. So, I started earlier, I was going to pick up where I left off. So, clearly, the city manager's, oh, Christine Russell, I'm going to say that again. Clearly, the city manager's position is a thankless job. Imagine going to work daily and getting nothing but complaints in the form of phone calls, messages, and emails. It seems clear that the people who want to do nothing but to complain about Miss Dolan's performance are those whom she has refused to bow down to, and for that, I applaud her. There is no way to make everyone happy, not the citizens and not the city employees. But that's okay, because making everyone happy is not her job. She does her job under scrutiny and maintains her composure, which is not something I could do with the cliques in the city. Those of you who preach kindness and peace and practice hatred and chastise, those who don't give you exactly what you want when you want it, that behavior needs to stop. Our city manager does not have to respond to every question she gets, especially those that she has answered, but gets asked over again and calls for different response. Sorry, I'm trying to hurry. I think it was quite distasteful for city candidates.
Oh, the time. I have to treat everyone. I've got my time, keep going over here.
And as a mother, sometimes I'm going to give my mother and my children angry. They don't have to like what I do, but I have to do what's best for them anyway.
Hello, my name is Tom Sevens, and this is a new podcast, but I'll say this publicly. I am up here to talk about the way the city manager handled the third and fourth act accusations against former councilwoman Julie Roy. At best, the judgment and critical thinking skills exhibited in this process by the city, uh, actually, by the city manager, to need demonstrate someone who is not qualified to handle all the personnel issues in this city. At worst, it was a malicious and vindictive attempt to oust Julie Roy from her council seat. Regardless of which one, she should not be reappointed as city manager. Thank you. By the way, if I have more time, did you guys oversee the email from Pipe Back? From Pipe Back, Vermont, or 5855? Community Pipe Back?
Thank you.
Can I ask, can you answer that question, please? Did you receive an email from about 15 community members?
Yes, yes, okay, right, right, thanks.
Mr. Rosen, did not? Mr. Sharbino, did you not receive it?
No, this isn't question and answer. No, the time is up. I said we received an email, I saved it, but it didn't, or Pipe Back, or Pipe Back I wrote.
Can I ask the city council?
The time is up, please.
You can pick it up.
But I didn't say you, I didn't know you were the third.
My name is Jack Rourke. I was actually on the city council when Laura Dolan was hired, and I think that was probably one of the best decisions that I made when I voted, to give her the job. For you that probably don't realize it, this lady is not costing the city a dime. The money she brought in, in grants, and she's in an office, is actually making money for the city. We hadn't had that in many years with our previous city manager. We have it now, so I would urge you to, you know, do what's best for the city of Newport, and please reappoint her. I will remind the citizens and the public that he was the one that made the nomination for us to hire in first place, so I hope you would stick to his words and get one back when we get hired.
With Crowe Prospect Street, I would say you should not reappoint her because, look at, you've got two sides of the room here. There's just division. There's division. I mean, you can't run a town when everybody is so divided and so upset, and the only way to stop the division is to get rid of the problem, which is sitting right over there. And if you don't do that, the division will continue, and the acrimony will continue, and that's not good for Newport. It's not good for the city if it wants to go forward in a positive direction. You've got to get people to come back together again, and it's never going to happen with Laura Dolan. I can tell you that.
Laura Graham, Newport City resident, and I'm just going to hear what Ruth said. I think we have too much of a division here, and it's not about not getting our way the first time, it's about wanting to work together. And unfortunately, I believe, it is my opinion, that as long as there is this much division as there is this room tonight, and some things that aren't being said, that I believe Laura Dolan is the problem here, and that we really need to consider, we need to find a city manager who can bring our entire city together instead of this separation. Thank you.
Anyone else? And I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three ayes and one no. Would the council care to explain therefore?
All right. I think the hardest thing to do is look at the past and not look for the future. And I know there's a group of people that feel that nothing is going to change. I personally believe there's going to be change, there's going to be change for the better, and we are going to come together as a group and a community and regard our growth in a positive way.
Yes, I voted no for one main reason, dealing the last two years with public comments and interactions with the public and past dealings. I voted yes, who was still there. She is very, very at work, she does in terms of the grants, and reducing the budget. Does she prefer, no, but these are things that, going forward, we will work on and come together as a council and progress.
I did not vote because there wasn't a tie, but if I had to have voted, I would have voted to reappoint the city manager because the other things that have been said have already been said, as far as the budgeting and the job that she is doing. I can tell you, she is well respected by other city managers in the state. That's my interaction. She's well respected by people in my career, and having people in my career that we have to work with, they are vital to work with to get things moving forward in Newport. She's well respected by the agency of committee, development, Commerce Committee Development. She's well respected by BGS. She's well respected even in the governor's office. So, we have to remember, we have to work for the state, and I took a lot of their comments about the city manager and the job that she is doing, and I took that in a lot of, and I've now moved away into my decision to reappoint her.
I'm Tasmith, the investment city manager. Based on the fact that our city is running well, we, our infrastructure is in good shape, our department heads are achieving and working very well, there's a very strong team here in the city that is moving ahead together, and Laura is the head of that team. We've got very good reports from our department heads, the support of Laura, and the work she's doing, we have a city that's moving ahead. There's been, you know, I don't necessarily take innuendo, rumor, falsehoods into consideration when looking at, you know, looking at whether or not to reappoint, and the facts for me are that she's running a good city here. Is every individual happy about it? No, that's obvious, and that is also taken into consideration. However, the positives of things that the city is doing, moving ahead with Laura, outweighs the weak or rively complaints around the, basically, as see, is a small group of people who are very, very discontent. So, we have to take that into consideration and balance it out, and when I do that, I come to the conclusion that the good that the city is doing, that her leadership is that the scale weighs in that direction.
Thank you. Moving on. The next item will be the reappointment of the Director of Public Works, and that is currently held by Tom Burnier, and I'm going to entertain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Ross, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Rosen. Discussion? Then, here and now, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. The next one is the appointment of the Chief of Police. A motion was made to table the reappointment of the police chief to the April 6 city council meeting, was made by Mr. Ross. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Here and now, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the chief of the fire department, um, we would need a motion to reap, to appoint, um, uh, reappoint, uh, John Harroward, uh, fire chief, is there a motion?
I'm gonna make that motion to reappoint John Harroward as the chief of the fire department.
Motion made, is there a second? Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Ross, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. The next one is the director of recreation, parks and recreation, and that's held by Jessica Booth, now we entertain a motion.
Would you appoint Jessica Booth as director of recreation?
Motion made by Melissa Patterson, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is unadministrated, currently held by Charles Elliott, now we entertain a motion.
Would you like to reappoint Charles Elliott?
Motion made, is there a second? Made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. The next is tax assessor, held by Robert Nerock, now we entertain a motion. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is city attorney, it's currently official page of Fletcher, and at this time, we entertain a motion.
Would you like to appoint the assessor? It's Fletcher, Fletcher, sorry.
Motion made, is there a second?
Seven.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the cemetery commission, is currently held by Frank Hornsby, John Lloyd Senior, and Dennis Shinet, we would need a motion.
Mr. Merrill, make that motion that Frank Hornsby, John Lloyd Senior, and Dennis Shinet as the cemetery commission.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the recreation committee. And I'm not sure, the list, I, I think I left that, let me see. I think I left that one page at home. Sorry about that. Okay, it would be, um, recreation committee members, it'd be Chad Poole, Jen Smith, Shirley Ryan, and Lori Wells, and it'd be a real, it'd be two reappointments and one appointment for a two-year term ending in two thousand twenty-two. Now we need a motion.
Mr. Merrill, make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Ross, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the city landscaper, it's currently held by Robert Goslin, I would entertain a motion.
Would you like to appoint the landscaper?
A motion made, is there a second? Made by Melissa Patterson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next would be planning commission, historic preservation, and as, we would need to reappoint, it would be Daniel Pickering, and it would be for a two-year term. We need a motion.
I want to get a motion.
A motion is the main, is there a second? Seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the harbor master, it's currently held by Eric, I never get the last, the pronunciation of his last name.
Volklan.
Volklan? Thank you. Um, to reappoint our harbor master. Um, is there a motion?
Would you like to appoint Eric Volklan to the harbor master?
Motion made, is there a second? Made by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. The, next would be the harbor commission, we have two, uh, reappointments, it would be James Johnson and William Oscar Riley, and it would be appointed for a two-year term ending in two thousand twenty-two. Made by Mr. Ross, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Do we have DRB Laura? I seem to find my.
I'm the same now. Is it coming? Is it coming?
Yeah, I love the, it's back. My mistake. Hey, yeah, I love that. Okay, would be, you recommend Daniel Pickering and Ann Kopen, that would be reappointed to the DRB for three more years. Now we entertain a motion. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, um, oh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next would be the local tax blocker, that's currently held by Laura Dogen, we need a motion. Made by Mr. Ross, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the animal patrol officer, and that really is the Newport Police Department that we usually assign it to. But I think we probably should just make a motion to make it formal. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by, made by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Wilson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the health officer, that is, um, currently held by the fire chief, he's smiling over there, and so we need a motion to appoint the fire chief, John Harroward, as a health officer. Motion made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Ross, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the tree board, and that's currently held by Robert Goslin, we would need a motion. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by, made by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is representative to the NVDD board, that's currently held by myself and the city management. We would need a motion if you so choose. Made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second? Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is a representative to the NVDD board, and that is currently held by myself, the mayor, I would entertain a motion. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion.
Yes, what is that board?
Northern Vermont Economic Development District. It used to be referred to as the EDC board, but they changed their name a few years ago. It's, it just covers, it's the board that covers all of the northern Vermont, Franklin Valley, Brenda Island, right through. Okay, a motion is made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is the waiter of coal, this is because we have it in the charter still. Oh, where is the waiter of coal? I need more of the teeth. Who's in the room that you could pick? Or pick the same person?
Have you heard of Ben and those?
What? Yeah, there's a lot of Russian law. Alright, so a motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Wilson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. And the last, we have the inspector of water. It's held by John Waters. Okay. We have, motion by Mr. Ross, is there a second? Seconded, discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. And then we have the voting safety officer, and that's currently held by Charles Elliott. The voting safety officer, is held by Charles, is unadministrated. So we need a motion. Motion made by Mr. Ross, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. We don't need them, guys. Well, in the state, we don't need those supposedly. And so things, I think you might be able to make a lot of free, but I don't think we actually have to keep them, but that's a question I have. Okay, the next item, number seven, here we'll see. Is we have to accept the planning commission resignation, which was presented, um, and that would be for good sprawl, and we have to formally accept it.
Would you accept the resignation for the planning commission?
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded by, made by Mr. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. And now we need an executive session to interview planning commission members. Um, that's, uh, U N of V S A three thirteen eighty-three, we need an executive session to interview, um... Yeah, we could. Okay, we could do the one over first, and then we'll take on, does the council have any new business? Mr. Johnson? Any new business?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm on fire, I'm wondering, kind of, uh, what we teach, uh, and, uh, project.
Anything else, all those have been signed? Okay. All those have been signed, Mr. Wilson, this is inches of time, you have any new business?
No.
Anything new? Mr. Ross? Mr. Open? Okay. Mr. Charbonneau, have you signed, did you have any new business? All those have been signed? Oh, okay. And what's about business? Mr. Johnson?
No.
Anything, Mr. Charbonneau? Any old business? No? Mr. Wilson? Anything? Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross, any business? Any old business? Our next regular scheduled city council meeting, oh, as of now, is Monday, April sixth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty P M. Um, and I'm not sure, um, if we're gonna keep holding them in the gym, to allow more people, how we separate, um, because if you do this in the house, you're working for the minimal distance, we would only allow, I think, six to eight chairs in there. And so I think we're gonna continue holding these meetings in the gymnasium for now.
So, because of the possible change in, you know, fire, whether that, the, other than team, if there were a change for anything, whether we have new locations, we have new locations. If you don't know, um, I would advise people, I think, to check with the city office, if there's, you know, any changes, or through the city website, you know, online Facebook, to check, you can go to the stores, to find accurate information on any change that they have, and I think we really understand that, you know, it's constantly changing. And today, we had three updates today as to our work environment, we both had a new, the same thing could be happening here at the city, so I, you know, advise anyone who's wants to keep up with it, make sure they know where to go, to do, to check, um, the call, the city court office, or, um, check this, check the city website, which is...
This is, this is very true, because I've had two hundred fifty gatherings to fifty, and now the federal government's recommending no more, no more social gatherings, more than ten. And I had emailed just recently that I know Barry has gone to remote meetings, and so they won't be having their normal meetings, they've gone to remote, because they've had it's a positive case in that area. But if we have to go to remote meetings, it would be very, there will be, just to give a brief overview of remote meetings, the way it works is we would still set the council room up, um, where the public could come, but council members could call in, um, I would probably be in the room, I'd probably have the manager in the room, and one other person in the room upstairs, running the equipment, and we'd do it on a conference call, and that would be published with a pin. So that's kind of a brief overview, and that's the procedures from the Secretary of State's office, that meets the open meeting law. And so, we work well until, right before the next meeting. Is anyone still there? No?
There, there.
Oh, okay, there's somebody, okay. I heard a person, yeah, okay. 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 I realize that we need to remove the executive session for the Planning Commission. It's 31383. Mr. Shabano, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson. And all those in favor say aye. Now I would need to go into the session.
There you go.
Oh, I see the red light.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. So, at this point, the council needs to make a motion to appoint Mario O'Daker to the Planning Commission. And this would be for this is Bob O'Dea. Bob O'Dea is the motion. So, that's until the next month. That's the book. It would be until these are three-year terms, right? It would be till 2023. Because Bob was helping Bear Park. So, we need a motion to appoint Mario O'Daker for the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Motion made by Melissa Patterson, is there a second? Seconded by John Wilson. Discussion. Then all those in favor say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 9:44 PM. Motion made by Mr. Shabano, is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, we adjourn.